Regular meeting number thirty-six will now come to order. Please stand for the playing of the National Anthem.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to welcome the Director of the Community Relations Commission, Derek Anderson, to lead us in prayer.
Let us pray. We come this evening to thank you for your goodness and your mercy towards all of us. We ask now that you come in this chamber and be in our thoughts, in our minds, in our deliberations, as we seek to serve, for truly we know that in order for us to be great, for the city of Columbus to be great, we must be about service. So come now and rest amongst us, and let service of others be the first on our mind. We thank you for this opportunity. We ask a special blessing on the members of council, the mayor, the entire administration. In your name we pray. Amen.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Clerk call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, President Klein.
Can I get a motion to dispense with the reading of the journal? Is there a second? Clerk call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, President Klein.
This week's communications received by the city clerk's office are listed on the agenda, and they'll be published in the City bulletin. Are there any other communications to be read in the record?
No, at this time.
How about resolutions from members of council? Councilmember Elizabeth Brown.
Yes, thank you, President Klein. Tonight, I am presenting a resolution to the Central Ohio chapter of the Alzheimer's Association, so I'd like to invite Emily Hansen and Jennifer Monroe Sega to the podium as I speak here. I recently met with Emily to discuss some of the Alzheimer's Association's work in central Ohio, and one thing that was really impressed upon us in that meeting, and Councilmember Stenziano was there too, is that as our population continues to age and more families experience the effect of Alzheimer's and other forms of dementia, recognizing and supporting the ongoing work of the Alzheimer's Association is really even more important. So tonight, I am sponsoring Resolution 0159X-2016, which is to recognize June 2016 as Alzheimer's and Brain Awareness Month, and June 20th, 2016, as the longest day. So I would like to invite you to make some comments, either one or both.
Thank you very much. On behalf of the Central Ohio Alzheimer's Association, we'd like to thank you for recognizing our chapter and also our initiatives, because in the time that I finish speaking, another person, every sixty-six seconds, another person will be diagnosed with Alzheimer's or related dementia. So currently, there are about 220,000 Central Ohioans that are suffering from this debilitating disease, and we want the city of Columbus to know that we are the go-to source for referrals, for our helpline, just to be there for the families, because this disease is not an individual disease. It is one that involves the entire family, and we are here to help. So again, we wanted to say thank you for helping to bring more awareness, because we can't do it by ourselves, so we have an 800 helpline, and we have clinicians and everybody on staff to help manage the course of this disease.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Just one more second. And I do want to explain that the reason, June 20th is the longest day in honor of the summer solstice, but it's to signify that every day for someone with Alzheimer's is the longest day.
Yes.
Correct? Okay, great. Well, are there any questions or comments for my colleagues? Hearing none, I move for adoption.
Second.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, President Klein.
Just really quick, I wanted to, again, we talked a lot about this last week, but wanted to recognize the Department of Public Service and really the city as we won the Smart Cities Award, and so I wanted to recognize Director Gallagher, Director Dow, Randy Bowman, and all those folks in public service on the city's side, even Director Davies, who started the work before she transitioned over to utilities, who put in the long, many months to get us to this point. Certainly congratulations, and thank you for the hard work.
Thank you, President Klein. Tonight, I've got two resolutions. The first one, I'd like to start by inviting Franklin County Municipal Court Clerk Lori M. Tyack to please come forward to the podium and her guests. As she makes her way up, I'd like to introduce Resolution Number 164X-2016, in recognition of the Franklin County Municipal Clerk of Court Lori M. Tyack for her completion of the Institute of Court Management Fellowship and for her service to the city of Columbus. Recently, the clerk, Tyack, successfully completed a fellowship at the Institute of Court Management. Now, this is a rigorous four-part program designed to further develop leadership and court management skills. Upon completion, she was honored at a graduation ceremony at the U.S. Supreme Courthouse. Clerk Tyack has served as the Franklin County Municipal Clerk since being first elected in 2005, and it's through her community outreach program that she has worked diligently to educate the citizens of Columbus about the functions of the clerk's office. Clerk Tyack truly understands that by educating the public and building cooperation with other agencies, she may better serve all who depend on the clerk's office and the legal system at large for the city of Columbus. So it's with great pleasure that I will be presenting this resolution, but first, I wanted to see if there are any questions or comments for my colleagues. Seeing none, I'll move for adoption.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, President Klein.
And with that adoption, Madam Clerk, the podium is all yours.
Good evening, council. Good evening, council. President Klein, Councilmember Brown, Brown, Harden, Stenziano, and Page, it's a pleasure to be here with you tonight, and I appreciate your recognition of my achievement. I have with me tonight my parents, Don Rowan and Brenda Rowan, and behind me is Marilyn Brown and Obie Lucas from my office. I was honored to represent our city and our county at the national level. The knowledge and experience gained by participating in the programs offered by the National Center for State Courts will be invaluable to me and the city of Columbus in the future. I'd like to thank my parents and my family who supported me during this journey, Obie Lucas, my chief deputy, who graduated from this program in 2015, and offered encouragement and inspiration, and Marilyn Stevens, my Director of Public Relations, who was politely persistent in reminding me to focus on my project, and all the members of the court who answered my questions and were very patient with me. One of the requirements for graduation was the completion of a research project, which was similar to a master's thesis. My project was entitled "Assigning Cases to Specialty Dockets: Getting It Right." The focus of the project was the redundant collection of data gathered and stored in silos by four agencies during the arrest and arraignment process. Cases examined from January to September 2016 were assigned to one of five specialized dockets conducted in municipal court. These include Mental Health Court, Opiate Court, ADAP or Drug and Alcohol Court, Catch Court for Victims of Human Trafficking, and Veterans Court. The project also included findings and recommendations. My hope is that this project will encourage city and county agencies to discuss and explore the possibility of a future comprehensive integrated data sharing system that would meet all the needs of the criminal justice partners in Franklin County. Thank you so much for this recognition.
Next, I would like to invite Burhan Ahmed, the Director of the Center for Somalia-American Engagement and its fellow guests and members, along with Suada Abu Maya, helper from the Our Helpers organization, to the podium. As they make their way up, I would like to introduce Resolution 165X-2016, to recognize and celebrate July 1st as Somalia Independence Day in the city of Columbus. July 1st marks the National Independence Day of Somalia, observed annually in Somalia in the Somalia diaspora around the world. It is a day that celebrates the Somalia Republic dating back to July 1st, 1960, when the trust territory of Somalia land and the state of Somalia land united to form one country. As we all know, the city of Columbus is home to one of the largest and fastest-growing Somalia communities in the world. It's estimated a growing number of at least 38,000 Somali immigrants and refugees live in the central Ohio and city of Columbus region, and we are all the better for it. This community is vital to building the strength and diversity of our city, to truly make it an opportunity city and an all-American city. Are there any questions or comments for my colleagues? Seeing none, I'd move for passage.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, President Klein.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Ahmed, at this time, the podium is yours for comment.
I do have my daughter Yasmin and Ahmed. I want to thank you, all of you, and especially thank you to the mayor and the president of the city council, also the council members. I want to thank you, all of you, for really making these days, to thank you for improving this resolution for today's Somalia Independence Day, which is July 1st. We have never left humble or fortunate to be the part of such amazing community of neighbors in this city, this great city, diversity where it makes a big impact. I want to thank you, all of you, for the contribution you guys make and all of them. Intimacy today's Somalis' national holiday observed annual in Somalia and diaspora worldwide is the first day of July 1st. Many Somali refugees and their families immigrate the United States, and today, Somali-Americans are one of the fastest-growing immigrants communities in central Ohio. And like many immigrants who came before, Somali-Americans sought shelter in the United States to escape the war persecution and to find opportunities to better their lives and the lives of their children. And Somali-Americans play an integral role in building, fermenting, and diversity communities, creating businesses, jobs in social, economic, cultural, and political, economically, to this great city. Celebration of the hundreds of this today's Ohio Somali decent gather celebrate Somalia Independence Day from Italians and British fifty-six years ago. Ohio is the nation's second-largest Somali immigrants in this nation. We thank you for this resolution, and all of you, thank you so much. God bless you. Thank you so much.
And I didn't know if Ms. Abu Maya would like to make any comments.
Suad, also, hold on, we'll be to present. You want to say it's beautiful? Okay, you can say it. Also comes that, say a few words.
Well, I don't have, I didn't think I'd come up here to talk, but I do want to thank you guys all for giving us this opportunity to come here today. Our mission is to try to help overcome social and economical obstacles through advocacy. So with all these organizations, that is really our main goal, is to try to bring the community together and bridge whatever gaps there are. That's it.
That is all I have tonight, President.
Thank you, Councilmember Stenziano. I do have one resolution, and ladies and gentlemen, we have a basketball legend in our midst. This is 162X-2016, to recognize and honor Jim Clemens for his career and continued dedication to the communities of Columbus. Mr. Clemens was born on Linden area, went on to play at the Ohio State University. In 1971, he was picked, please make your way forward, by the way, Mr. Clemens, to the podium. He was picked thirteenth in the first round of the NBA draft, went on to play for the Lakers, and won an NBA championship in 1972. He then played for the Cavs, and the Knicks, and the Bullets during his career, and has also, has been coaching, and is currently presently on the coaching staff of the New York Knicks, but also coached for the Bulls, the Lakers, and the Hornets, and was the head coach for the Mavericks. Jim's Hoopology Camp, which I hope we can hear about, brings together youth to learn not only about the game of basketball, but also to work on social and financial skills and promote community engagement. So if I could have a motion to pass 162X-2016 for adoption. Is there a second? Clerk call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, President Klein.
Sir, the floor is yours.
Well, thank you, President Klein and city council. It's an honor, and I'm very pleased to be here and accept it. Columbus is home, and I will continue to support the Linden community and the youth of Columbus. You mentioned the Hoopology Camp, and it's indeed a pleasure to inform you about the purpose of the camp and its mission. The camp is for boys and girls, sixth to tenth grade, and is going to be held July the 25th through the 29th at Whitehall Yooling High School. It's a, from 8:30 in the morning to 4 o'clock, and we do serve two snacks, one in the morning, lunch, and snack in the afternoon. The purpose of the camp is for those youth who have and want an opportunity to succeed in life, not just in sports. We hold courses in financial literacy, we promote and teach math, we want to develop personal life skills and discipline, and we want to grow the fundamental skills of the game of basketball, and also be able to think at a critical mass. We want to facilitate partnerships with the community in the surrounding areas, and we want to emphasize character, not only on the basketball court, but also off of it. Hoopology in itself is the opportunity to play and think in coordination with what's happening, and use your skills and abilities in concert. We want to develop an overall human being and the athlete, not just one. Believe in balancing the skills that they have, and hopefully that will lead to a balanced life when their sports careers are over. What I would also like to do is to invite you, the council members, to my church, Bethany Presbyterian Church, on the 24th. We'll be celebrating our 98th anniversary, and I'm going to be the speaker. So please join me and my Bethany family on that Sunday morning, 11:00 a.m., okay? Basketball and sports bring out more than just athletic talent, and that's the real purpose of this camp, all right? We're in a teaching mode, and it's a community project, not just my project, it's a community project. So we're reaching out for the community to support us, because if you support the youth, the youth will support you. You can, more information, you can go to hoopologycamp.org. We're a 501(c)(3) organization, and that will link you up and give you the information that hopefully that you need. I want to thank you for this recognition, and I'm very proud and honored to receive. Thank you.
Thank you, Coach. Any questions or comments for Mr. Clemens? Is it okay to ask you who was the best player you coached, who was the best player you played against, or is that like off limits, it's going to get you in trouble?
I've been truly blessed to, I would like to say, have a hand in the growth and development of a number of players. One played in Chicago, I think he needs to be nameless, he wore number 23. And a couple other gentlemen who really have an impact on the game, a number 33 in Chicago, by name of Scotty Pippen. And I think gentlemen who played, two gentlemen played in Los Angeles, Mr. Shaquille O'Neal and Mr. Kobe Bryant. I think those are the top of the list, but that being said, good players make better coaches. So I've been truly blessed to have a longtime relationship with the game, and through love and through respect, I think I've been blessed, it comes back to me. So thank you.
I've heard of those four. Auditor Dorian?
Thank you, President Klein. I thought it would be informative for council and for everyone that Friday afternoon, we received the invoice for the first payment on the special election to be held in August the 2nd of 2016. This first invoice represents 65% of the total billing, so the 65% factor is $664,463.65. The remaining 35%, which is $357,788.12, so it'll bring the total billing or cost of this special election to $1,022,251.77. I think it's important for all the taxpaying citizens to be aware of this. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Auditor Dorian. Treasurer's office, city attorney. See any of our municipal court judges here? Are there any requests by members of council for the removal of an ordinance resolution from the consent action portion of the agenda? Seeing none, then we now have a motion to waive second reading of the titles of 30-day legislation by the city clerk. Is there a second? Clerk call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, President Klein.
Thank you. Clerk Blevins, will you now read into the record the ordinance numbers of 30-day legislation on tonight's agenda for first reading?
Finance Committee ordinance 1553-2016, Economic Development Committee ordinance 1651-2016, Education Committee ordinance 1585-2016, Public Service and Transportation Committee Resolution 140X-2016, Public Utilities Committee ordinances 1313, 1489, 1518, 1538, and 1548-2016.
The following ordinances appear on our agenda as consent actions. Will the clerk now read the, no, will the clerk now read the ordinance numbers of each into the record?
Resolution of expression 161X-2016, Finance Committee ordinance 1539-2016, Health and Human Services Committee ordinances 1394, 1465, 1521, 1524, 1526, 1556, 1576, and 1583-2016, Economic Development Committee ordinance 1658-2016, Administration Committee ordinance 1669-2016, Public Safety Committee ordinances 1409, 1547, 1573-2016, Public Service and Transportation Committee ordinances 1488, 1541, 1542, 1619, and 1667-2016, Small and Minority Business Development Committee ordinance 1574-2016, Housing Committee ordinance 1668-2016, Technology Committee ordinances 985 and 1454-2016, Public Utilities Committee ordinances 1009, 1450, 1451, 1460, and 1491-2016, Judiciary and Court Administration Committee ordinances 1406 and 1438-2016.
We do have two speakers on the consent action portion of the agenda. The first is Mr. Nathaniel George Wilkins. It looks like you're speaking in favor of 1668-2016. You have three minutes.
1612 Arlington Avenue, Mr. Nathaniel George Wilkins, determined a solar vacant property in the North Linden area. I just want to know what's going to happen with 22... 2278 minutes of the avenue, how long is man holding the land bank, and tell me what the property's going to be used for. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Wilkins. Director Shoney, if you could follow Mr. Wilkins and give him the answer to the questions, we'd appreciate it. Our next speaker is Pamela Thomas. It looks like you're speaking against 1547-2016. Ms. Thomas? Okay, there you are. Hello, welcome to council. If you could state your name, any organizations that you represent, your address, and you'll have three minutes.
Thank you. I'm just with myself, and I represent my neighbors, and I live on the hill. The hill is not the greatest place to live, you know. It's kind of the scourge of the city. It's a little mini Beirut, highest crime, little segment between West Broad Street and Sullivan. I'm on West Burgess Avenue, and just inside West Broad Street on West Burgess. Right already, the celebration for 4th of July has begun with fireworks. 2 o'clock in the morning, boom, boom, we have a little Beirut starting. After, just after the storm yesterday, the fireworks began, and the rats came out with boom, 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 and it will continue. The dogs want to climb the wall, they want to climb me. In my little apartment complex, which is a U, it magnifies like an amphitheater. Last year, I swore that I would stand here before you, because a kid threw a firecracker only in sound. This is, this needs to be a sound ordinance, not a fireworks ordinance, a sound firecracker at my dog's while they were pooping. The way the law is written, it ties the law officer's hands, because it says that the law officers have to see this happening before they can arrest these people. We have laws on the books that say if a, if a car alarm goes off, you can buy a ticket for that, $135, and you shut those things down. And the police liaisons have been very effective with that, thank goodness. You would not put up with this crap in your neighborhoods, believe me, you would not. We've got to change it. We cannot have this scourge going on in our city, and I believe that it perpetuates more demise amongst us up there. I'm against this, the way it's written, because you've got to free up our officers. Now either make a codicil to the law and put some plainclothes out there so they can see it happening. Now, send them out, that's a possibility, write them tickets, write tickets to the landowners, notify the landowners. I mean, there's all kinds of ways you can do this, half dozen ways you can be creative with this. Tax the landowners, tax the people, find a whole bunch of different ways to do it. But next year, I don't want to stand here, or next week, I don't want to stand here and talk about this. I want to talk about half dozen other things that we can be creative with. You understand? You're smart people. Let's find a way.
Thank you, Ms. Thomas.
What can we do?
Councilmember Brown, Chair's Public Safety, I know that you've had some experience with this as director. Do you want to make a couple comments, Director? Councilmember, former director? Councilmember, former director?
Council President, Ms. Thomas. I'm certain that the issues of people's behavior with regards to fireworks, as we know, they are illegal, and certainly following the circumstances you're discussing from the storms, what we can do, again, is to have law enforcement out into the area, patrol the area aggressively because fireworks are illegal. And subsequently, what we will end up doing is having, and I will speak to Director Prashati to make certain that we at least have some visible presence in the neighborhood, especially coming up on the 4th of July, and so that you won't have to be here next year talking about the exact same issue.
If Assistant Director Prashati, Deputy Director Prashati, could you meet with Ms. Thomas offline to make sure you exchange information to follow up on what Councilmember Mitch Brown was talking about? Thank you. Any other commentary about the consent action portion of the agenda? Seeing none, I get a motion for approval of these items designated as consent. Is there a second? Clerk call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, President Klein.
The consent action carries. We'll now proceed with the second reading of 30-day table and emergency legislation. The first committee is the Finance Committee. In President Pro Tim's absence, she is the Chair of Finance. I'm going to turn the microphone over to Councilmember Harden. Councilmember Harden, the floor is yours.
Thank you, President Klein. Tonight in the Finance Committee, we will convene a public hearing to discuss the second reading of Resolution 0134x-2016 to adopt the 2017 tax budget and to authorize and direct the city auditor to submit said budget to the county and to declare an emergency. First, I'd move to take this resolution from the table.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, President Klein.
Thank you. As we begin, I'd like to note that passage of this resolution and the filing of this tax budget with the Franklin, Fairfield, and Delaware County Budget Commissions will entitle the City of Columbus to participate in local government funds, which are monies collected by the state of Ohio and shared with its various political subdivisions via the counties. To qualify, this legislation must be filed with the county no later than July 20th of this year. It is for this reason that emergency action is requested. This tax budget will also establish the property tax rates for the City of Columbus for calendar year 2017. This solely, this is solely referencing the property taxes that can be imposed by the City of Columbus. It is important to emphasize that this piece of legislation does not increase taxes. It maintains the same property tax rate that has existed in the City of Columbus since 1956, almost 60 years now. It is also important to note that the city has not sought an increase in its property tax rate since 1956. This piece of legislation is not appropriating any money, it is not authorizing any expenditures. This legislation is telling the County Budget Commission, which consists of the County Auditor, the County Treasurer, and the County Prosecutor, that we are not seeking an increase in property tax rates. This does not apply to any other taxes. It does not relate to the property taxes levied by the school district. It does not relate to any of the property taxes that are levied by the county. It does not relate to the property taxes levied by the county MRDD or any other social service agencies. This is an annual piece of legislation. It is the vehicle by which the City of Columbus and the City Council informs the Franklin County Budget Commission of the property taxes, tax rate to levy in the City of Columbus. This information has been compiled as a collaborative effort between the City Auditor's Office and the Department of Finance and Management. With that, I would like to turn the floor over to Mr. Dorian to give us more background on this resolution.
Thank you, Councilman Harden and all council members. You pretty much recited everything I was going to, but let me emphasize that this does not call for an increase in the tax rate for the City of Columbus on real property. I say that now for only the City of Columbus, not other political subdivisions within the county. I would also mention that filing of this document, and the document is about 45 pages long, by the way, it's fraught with guesses. I've said many times, we live in a world of guesses. So it's a collaborative effort between the Department of Finance and Management, for which I thank them very much for their cooperation, and our office. This document, by filing it, will also make us eligible for local government funds from the state of Ohio. Some flow through the county, some flow directly to the city from the state. But to put things in perspective, the local government fund this year, I would anticipate bringing $21 million. We could compare that to some of the actions of our friends in the state legislature at the turn of this century in 2001. That was $50 million. So you can see there have been some unkind acts toward the cities in Ohio. I'd also mention that the property tax, the rate, which will remain the same, will bring in approximately $41 million to the city. All of these monies go into the city's general operating fund. So I believe that pretty much covers the substance of the ordinance, but if there are any other questions, I'll be glad to handle them.
Thank you, Auditor Dorian. Are there any questions, Director, for Auditor Dorian? Director Dea Gardella, do you have any additional comments on this resolution?
No, sir, I do not. Thank you.
Well, thank you. Do we have any speakers on Resolution 0134x? Seeing none, I'd like to move, actually, this officially ends the public hearing for Resolution 0134x-2016. I'd like to move to adopt Resolution 0134x-2016, which will adopt the 2017 tax budget and authorize the direct, the city auditor to submit and said budget to the county and to declare an emergency.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, President Klein.
Thank you. Next, we have Resolution Number 0145x-2016 to accept the capital improvement program 2016 through 2021 as described herein as the primary guide for future capital improvement budget ordinances and to declare an emergency. By this resolution, City Council accepts the capital improvement program 2016 through 2021. This was the primary guide for the 2016 capital improvement budget. The CIP reflects the remaining priorities from the 2008 voted bond package and priorities identified in the 2013 voted bond package. Selected portions of the 2016 through 2021, CIP will also serve as the basis for the 2016 voted bond package. Director Dea Gardella, do you have additional comments?
President Klein, Chair Harden, members of council. Again, this is a plan. It's a capital plan for 2016 through 2021. We ask council to consider this each year. It is a dynamic document for capital projects. This particular one, with the exception of the 2016 numbers, which obviously resulted in our capital budget earlier this year, is about $2.77 billion. I want to emphasize that the amounts in projects in here are adjusted each year depending on the status of the Special Income Tax Fund, as well as input from the community, the administration, council, and the city auditor. The adoption of this plan does not lock any specific projects at this time. That won't be done until we do the annual capital improvements budget process, with the next one, of course, being in 2017. And of course, and then there has to be an accompanying bond sale for us to have cash to actually put money to these projects. This plan, however, will be the basis for the upcoming 2016 voted bond package, and I appreciate council's consideration and want to thank my colleagues in finance and management, as well as the community and the city auditor's office for helping in putting this together. And I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have about this. Thank you.
Thank you, Director. Are there any additional questions or comments? I would just also like to add my appreciation to Chair Tyson and Department of Finance and the auditor's office for preparing this for us. If there are no questions or comments, I move for passage.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, President Klein.
Next, we have ordinance number 1603-2016 to authorize the issuance of unlimited tax bonds in an amount not to exceed $5,180,000 for public safety and health-related projects, Section 44-1B of the city charter. This ordinance authorizes the issuance of unlimited tax bonds in an amount not to exceed $5,180,000 for public safety and health related to this project. I would ask Mr. Dorian to speak on this ordinance, but also the 11 others that pertain to the bond package, 2016 voted bond package.
Councilman Harden, thank you, and all council members. Again, you have a series of ordinances before you that really are a result of collaboration between the auditor's office and the Office of Finance and Management. You have 11 ordinances authorizing, that will authorize the issuance of $469.6 million of city bonds. You have one ordinance that will authorize the issuance of $11.8 million for the two city garages that are owned downtown. I'll offer a couple of comments on them. Of this $469.6 million of bonds, about 80% of them are authorized by a vote of the people, whether it was a water issue, or a sanitary sewer issue, or some transportation and so forth. But about 80% of that $469.6 million is directly authorized by the voters. When you go beyond the water and sewer issues, sanitary sewers, storm sewers, and of course water, we refer to those as enterprise-type bonds because they pay for themselves. When a person pays their water bill, they're paying for those water and sewer bonds. And far be it from anybody in this city administration, or anybody that I've worked with, that will be reckless with treating our sanitary sewers and waters. We will put forth what is necessary to maintain the purity of the water and the propriety of the sewage flow. So again, all of those matters were voted by the people. The other ordinances that we call unvoted, when you look at the titles of these ordinances, if you see the word unlimited, that means voted by the people. If you see limited, that means authorized by this council. Once you go beyond water and sewer, again, with very few exceptions, all of these ordinances, whether it's transportation, or parks and playgrounds, these matters will be paid for by your income tax set aside. Many of us have been out into four different neighborhoods in the last couple of weeks talking about bonds and primarily talking about the bond issues that'll be on the ballot next November. But this is how we pay for things, and we can say to that audience, and we do say, your taxes will not be raised if you vote for these ordinances. I often add, how in the world can we say that? We can say it because you're already paying for them. You're already paying for them in your income tax payments. We take one quarter of that income tax and set it aside, and use that money primarily to pay for the parks and the playgrounds and the streets and so forth. So again, you have 12 ordinances in front of you. The last ordinance is for the two city downtown garages. Those garages are just unbelievably successful. They've not taken a penny of city income tax to support them. They're paid for by revenues from the two garages. There is a special assessment on some properties for one of the garages, and there is a downtown TIF that helps pay for those garages. But I must say, very, very well-planned financing. So I ask you to support these ordinances, and again, can state they will not result in tax increases. The water and sewer matters will be paid through an individual's water bills. The other matters primarily through the income tax set aside. If there are any questions, I'll try to handle them.
Thank you, Mr. Dorian, or Auditor Dorian, for your leadership in shepherding us through this 2016 voted bond package. Do we have any additional questions for Mr. Dorian? We have one speaker on this ordinance, Ms. Maude Grace. If you, Ms. Maude Grace, would state your name and your address and the organization you represent, may represent? You have three minutes.
Good evening. My name is Maude Grace, and I represent Dashler Park Civic. Thank you, Mr. President, councilpeople. I'm here to give thanks to Ms. Tyson because she has been very active in health and safety of this community, actually the whole city of Columbus, in regards to health and safety issues. And I would just like to let her know that I appreciate all the hard work she does, and I'm in favor of the law. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Maude. If there are no questions or comments, I would first move to waive second reading on 1603-2016.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, President Klein.
I move for passage.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, President Klein.
Thank you. Next, we have ordinance 1604-2016 to authorize the issuance of unlimited tax bonds in an amount not to exceed $38,220,000 for recreation and park-related projects, Section 44-1B of the city charter. I would first move to waive second reading.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, President Klein.
And move for passage.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, President Klein.
Next, we have ordinance 1605-2016 to authorize the issuance of unlimited tax bonds in an amount not to exceed $98,900,000 for transportation and refuse projects, Section 44-1 of the city charter. First, I would request and waive second reading.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, President Klein.
And move for passage.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, President Klein.
Next, we have 1606-2016 to authorize the issuance of unlimited tax bonds in an amount not to exceed $145,235,000 for sanitary sewer-related projects. First request to waive second reading.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, President Klein.
And move for passage.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, President Klein.
Next, we have 1607-2016 to authorize the issuance of unlimited tax bonds in an amount not to exceed $87,355,000 for water, storm, and power projects. First request to waive second reading.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, President Klein.
And move for passage.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, President Klein.
Next, we have 1608-2016 to authorize the issuance of limited tax bonds in an amount not to exceed $18,815,000 for public safety and health-related projects. First request to waive second reading.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, President Klein.
And move for passage.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, President Klein.
Next, we have 1609-2016 to authorize the issuance of limited tax bonds in an amount not to exceed $25,705,000 for streets and highways projects. First request to waive second reading.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, President Klein.
And move for passage.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, President Klein.
Next, we have ordinance 1610-2016 to authorize the issuance of limited tax bonds in an amount not to exceed $23,160,000 for economic community development projects, Section 44-B of the city charter. First request to waive second reading.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, President Klein.
And move for passage.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, President Klein.
Next, I have sixteen eleven dash twenty sixteen to authorize the issuance of tax bonds in an amount not to exceed $20,485,000 for construction management projects. Section forty-four one B of the city charter. First, I would request a wave second reading.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, President Klein.
And move for passage.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, President Klein.
Next, I have ordinance sixteen twelve dash twenty sixteen to authorize the issuance of unlimited tax bond in an amount not to exceed $1 million for fleet management projects. Section forty-four dash one B of the city charter. First, I would request to wave second reading.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, President Klein.
And move for passage.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, President Klein.
Next, I would have ordinance sixteen thirteen to authorize the issuance of limited tax bond in an amount not to exceed $5,545,000 for information services projects. Section forty-four one B of the city charter. First, I would request to wave second reading.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, President Klein.
And move for passage.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, President Klein.
Lastly, in the Finance Committee, we have ordinance sixteen fourteen dash twenty sixteen to authorize the issuance of limited tax notes in an amount not to exceed $11,800,000 to refund outstanding bond anticipation notes issued for the purpose of financing the cost of transportation projects. Section forty-four dash one B of the city charter. First, I would request a wave for second reading.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, President Klein.
And move for passage.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, President Klein.
If it's all right with you, Council President, move on to Public Service and Transportation. In Public Service and Transportation Committee, I have ordinance fifteen forty-nine dash twenty sixteen to authorize the City Attorney to file complaints in order to immediately appropriate and accept fees simple and lesser real estate title interests necessary to timely complete the Poindexter Village Roadways Phase Two Public Improvement Project, and to authorize the City Attorney to spend funds from the Streets and Highways Bond Fund and declare an emergency. This is an imminent domain action for the completion of the Poindexter Village. This resident did not respond to treated outreach from the Department of Public Service, so we are just moving forward for basic infrastructure improvements in the area. If there are no questions or comments, I move for passage.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, President Klein.
That is all I have in my committees this evening.
Thank you, Councilmember Harden. The next committee is Economic Development chaired by Councilmember Elizabeth Brown. Councilmember, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Council President. First, in Economic Development, tonight, we have ordinance fourteen ninety-nine dash twenty sixteen to authorize the Director of the Department of Development to enter into a jobs growth incentive agreement with the Suffolk Group Incorporated, doing business as Improving Enterprises Incorporated, equal to twenty-five percent of the amount of new income tax withheld on employees for a term up to five years, in consideration of the company's proposed investment of $65,000, and the creation of thirty new full-time permanent positions. I want to highlight that Improving Enterprises is an IT firm. It's a complete IT services firm, offering training and consulting, and recruiting in various project services. So these are well-paying jobs, jobs between $50,000 annually and $90,000 annually, but averaging together close to $78,000 a year. Are there any questions for my colleagues about this deal? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, President Klein.
Thank you. Next, we have ordinance sixteen forty-eight dash twenty sixteen to remove parcels from the existing Penn West West and Penn West East tax increment financing areas by amending ordinances twenty ninety-two dash oh-one and twenty ninety-three dash oh-one to create the Jaeger site and the Buggy Works tax increment financing areas, to declare improvements to those parcels, to be a public purpose and exempt from taxation, to authorize the Director of the Department of Development to amend the reimbursement agreement between the city and NWD Investments LLC, and to declare an emergency. Any questions for my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, President Klein.
Thank you. And finally, in Economic Development, we have ordinance seventeen fifty-nine dash twenty sixteen. This is to authorize the Director of the Department of Development to enter into contract with Access Health Columbus, doing business as Healthcare Collaborative of Greater Columbus, to administer and support research and strategic development associated with the establishment of the Columbus Women's Commission, to authorize the transfer of $80,000 between departments within the general fund, to authorize the expenditure of $80,000 from the general fund, and to declare an emergency. Before we move further with this, I did want to ask Director Shoney why this is an emergency piece of legislation.
Thank you, Chairwoman Brown, President Klein, members of council. We are asking for council's assistance in moving this forward as emergency legislation so that we can begin to get the work of the commission moving forward quickly. As you all know, we're approaching summer break, and for us to get the contracts we want lined up in order to put this program, or to begin the work of the commission, we really would like your indulgence in helping us move this forward quickly.
And this is for the early stages of the commission's work in those highlighted areas?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for my colleagues? Okay. Seeing none, I move for passage.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, President Klein.
Thank you. Is it all right if I move on to Education? Tonight, in Education, we have ordinance fifteen eighty-six dash twenty sixteen to authorize the Director of Education to modify contracts with the 2015 to 2016 Early Start Columbus Providers, to allow them to continue providing pre-kindergarten services during the 2016-2017 school year, and to declare an emergency. Would actually like to table this piece of legislation till July eleventh, 2016. So I'd like to move to table it until then, please. Thank you.
Call the roll. Goodbye, boys.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Harden?
Yes.
Page?
Yes.
Stenziano?
President Klein?
Table to seven eleven sixteen.
Thank you. That is all I have in my committees.
Thank you, Councilmember Brown. The next committee is the Housing Committee chaired by Councilmember Page. Chairperson Page, the floor is yours.
Thank you, President Klein. We have one ordinance in housing this evening, fifteen twenty-eight dash twenty sixteen to amend ordinance twenty six sixteen dash twenty thirteen passed November twentieth two thousand and thirteen to include emergency repair services as eligible expenditures, to authorize the Director of the Department of Development to contract with various contractors that provide emergency home repair services to low and moderate-income households in Columbus, to waive the competitive bidding provisions of the Columbus City Code, and to declare an emergency. A director, could you speak briefly to why we are waiving the competitive bidding provisions of the Columbus City Code and declaring this an emergency?
Thank you, Chair Page, President Klein, members of council. These are two contractors who have gone through our normal competitive bidding process. What we're doing in this case is providing us flexibility to pay these contractors out of a different fund. In particular, when we have CDBG funds, when we're, if we're in a period where we don't have CDBG funds available, which we normally pay these contracts out of, gives us the ability to pay out of a different source of funds. So these folks have already been through a competitive bidding process, and that's why we're asking for the waiver in this specific instance.
Thank you, Director. Are there any questions or comments for the Director? CNN, we have one speaker speaking for this ordinance, Ms. Maude Grace. If you could please come down and state your name, any organizations you are representing.
Thank you, President Klein, city council persons. I'm here to thank you for this project because I have a lot of seniors in my neighborhood, and I am sure that there is quite a few seniors around the city that needs these projects. And it's nice to see that the city is taking care of some of the projects of people that cannot afford to have their homes and things kept up because of income and their disabilities or whatever. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Grace. And again, thank you for your continued advocacy, not only for your neighborhood, Dashler Park, but for the entire city. We definitely appreciate that, and thank you for coming down. If there are no further questions or comments, I move for passage.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, President Klein.
Thank you. That's all I have this evening. President Klein?
Thank you, Chair Page. The next committee is the Technology Committee chaired by Councilmember Stenziano. Chair, Stenziano, the floor is yours.
Thank you, President Klein. Tonight, in the Technology Committee, we have three ordinances. First is ordinance one three seven two dash twenty sixteen to authorize the Director of the Finance and Management Department on behalf of the Department of Technology to establish a purchase order with DLT Solutions, Inc., utilizing a state-term contract for Oracle Software Licensing, Maintenance, and Support Services, to authorize the expenditure of $574,707.73 from the Department of Technology Information Services Division, Information Services Operating Fund, and declare an emergency. The Oracle software is a critical component of a number of citywide business systems, including 301, Performance Series, Income Tax, and GIS. The software is server-based and has given the city the capability to web-enabled applications for citizens' use and ensure compliance with licensing agreements. The emergency designation is being requested for this purchase to continue with services that are necessary to support daily operation activities while ensuring no service interruptions. If there are no questions or comments from my colleagues, I move for passage.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, President Klein.
Next, we have ordinance one six one five dash twenty sixteen to authorize the Director of the Department of Finance and Management on behalf of the Department of Technology to establish a purchase order with OnX USA LLC for Hewlett-Packard Software Maintenance and Support, to authorize the expenditure of $109,774.23 from the Department of Technology Information Services Division, Information Services Operating Fund, and declare an emergency. The Department of Technology utilizes HP Information Technology Service Management software to enable its department's customers to report technology issues and requests by creating tickets online or by calling the Department of Technology Help Desk. This way, staff can track problems while also enabling customers to monitor progress on tickets submitted. The department also uses the ITSM system to proactively monitor other critical systems like 301, so the department can detect and resolve potential issues with these systems before department customers are impacted. If there are no questions or comments from my colleagues, I move for passage.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, President Klein.
The last ordinance in technology is ordinance one six one eight dash twenty sixteen to authorize the Director of Finance and Management on behalf of the Department of Technology to establish a purchase order with DLT Solutions LLC for Red Hat Linux Software Maintenance and Support, utilizing a state-term contract, to authorize the expenditure of $35,101.45 from the Department of Technology Information Services Division, Information Services Operating Fund, and declare an emergency. This ordinance continues the city's contract with Red Hat Linux for software maintenance and support through June thirtieth, 2017. The emergency designation is being requested for this purchase to continue with Red Hat services that are necessary to support daily operation activities starting July first, 2016. If there are no question or comments from my colleagues, I move for passage.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, President Klein.
If I can move on to Public Utilities? Thank you, Mr. President. Tonight, in Public Utilities, we have two ordinances. The first is ordinance one two five one dash twenty sixteen to authorize the Director of Public Utilities to enter into a construction contract with the Rider Company for the Big Walnut Augmentation Rickenbacker Interceptor Biofilter Project, to authorize the appropriation expenditure of $3,606,900 from the Ohio EPA Water Pollution Control Loan Fund, and to amend the 2016 capital improvements budget for the Division of Sewage and Drainage. The work for this project consists of rehabilitating the biofilters and facilities, shaft and sewer mainhole work, electrical and instrumental work, and communication upgrades to the existing biofilters. The construction phase of this project is anticipated to be 485 days, with an anticipated completion date by October, 2017. Three competitive bids were received. The selection process used the bid tab and quality factor form evaluation process, and was awarded to the Rider Company, who was deemed the lowest responsive, responsible, and best bidder based on the evaluation process. If there are no questions or comments from my colleagues, I move for passage.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, President Klein.
And the last ordinance in utilities is ordinance one four seven seven dash twenty sixteen to authorize the Director of Public Utilities to enter into a guaranteed maximum reimbursement agreement with the Homewood Corporation pursuant to section one eight six of the Columbus City Charter for a sewer extension as part of the Central College Big Walnut Sub Truck Sewer Project, to authorize the appropriation and transfer of $6,643,851.81 from the Sanitary Sewer Reserve Fund to the Sanitary Sewer General Obligation Bond Fund, and to authorize the expenditure of up to $6,643,851.81 from the Sanitary Sewer General Obligation Bond Fund for the Division of Sewer and Drainage, and to amend the 2016 capital improvements budget. This project, as you heard, will include the extension of the Central College Sub Truck Sewer from its current terminus just east of the intersection of Central College Road and Course Drive to just east of Hamilton Road and north into the proposed Homewood Development. The project consists of 5,474 linear feet of sewer insulation, ranging in size from 30-inch diameter to 12-inch diameter. And this project will consist of two parts. Part one will be west, north of Central College-Hamilton intersection, and part two east of Hamilton. If there are no questions or comments, I move for passage.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, President Klein.
Thank you, President Klein.
Thank you, Chair Stenziano. Any other business to come before council this evening? Seeing none, can I get a motion to adjourn? Is there a second? Clerk call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, President Klein.
We'll stand adjourned. We'll take zoning at 6:30, and we do have one non-agenda speaker that will take here Regular meeting number 37 will now come to order. Can I get a motion to dispense with the reading of the Journal? Is there a second? Clerk call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, President Klein.
Are there any communications and reports received by the city clerk?
No, there are not.
How about first readings of 30-day legislation?
No, there are not.
Okay, we'll now go to zoning. Councilmember Page chairs that committee. All members serve on that committee. Councilmember Page, the floor is yours.
Thank you, President Klein. Before beginning the zoning agenda, I'll briefly explain the rules of council as pertaining to speaking before council on zoning's invariances. We permit three speakers on each side, three proponents and three opponents, and we ask that they limit their remarks to three minutes on each side, and we provide an opportunity for rebuttal from the applicant. On the advice of the City Attorney's Office, we ask that anyone here this evening who wishes to speak either for or against any council variance, including staff, please stand, raise your right hand, and be sworn in. I swear or affirm to tell the truth and nothing but the truth. Please answer, I will. Thank you. The first ordinance this evening is fifteen fifty-eight dash twenty sixteen to rezone 3507 Morse Road, 43224, being 12.4 acres located on the south side of Morse Road, 224 feet west of Sunbury Road, from our rural district to CPD Commercial Plan Development District. The applicant is Jermaine Lexis of Easton, in care of Jeffrey L. Brown, attorney. The proposed use is an automobile service center. The city department's recommendation is approval, Northeast Area Commission recommended approval. I do not believe that we have any speakers for this piece, and I would first like to move to amend as submitted to the clerk.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, President Klein.
And I now move for passage.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, President Klein.
We now have ordinance fifteen sixty-two dash twenty sixteen to rezone 5555 Cleveland Avenue, being 28.61 acres located on the on the west side of Cleveland Avenue, 240 feet north of Teakwood Drive, from CPD Commercial Plan Development District to CPD Commercial Plan Development. The applicant is Central Ohio Transit Authority, care of Perry G. Payne. The proposed use is a COTA Transit Center and commercial development. The city department's recommendation is approval. Northland Community Council recommended approval. And I would just like to ask staff to give a brief presentation on this ordinance.
Good evening. The site is developed with a big-box retail store and zoned in the CPD Commercial Plan Development District. The requested CPD district updates the existing plan and development text to allow a portion of the existing parking lot to be redeveloped as a COTA Transit Center. The text and site plan for the existing big-box retail development have been updated to reflect current code and existing conditions. The provisions for lighting, screening, and landscaping commitments to a site plan and elevations for the transit center are all included in this request. The text also proposes slight deviations to landscaping, screening, and setback requirements to optimize sufficient circulation. The site is located within the boundaries of the Northland Plan Volume 1, which recommends community-scale mixed uses for this location, and the promotion of multimodal transportation with an emphasis on encouraging transit access in this area. The requested CPD district is consistent with the plan recommendations and with the zoning and development patterns of the area, and therefore our staff recommendation is for approval. I'd be happy to answer any questions. Thanks.
Thank you so much, Ms. Payne. Are there any questions or comments? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, President Klein.
Ordinance 1575-2016 to rezone 1075 East Main Street 43205, being .35 acres located at the southeast corner of East Main Street and South Ohio Avenue, from ARLD Apartment Residential District to CPD Commercial Plan Development District. The applicant is Samira H. Delac, in care of Bonbo Longue. The proposed use is a fuel sales with convenience retail. The city department's recommendation is disapproval. The Near East Area Commission recommended approval. Chan, if you could just speak briefly on why you are recommending disapproval?
Yes, absolutely. Because of the configuration of this site, it was previously a gasoline sales facility with the pumps in the front and the convenience retail store in the rear. That is against the urban commercial overlay development requirements where if they were building this new, the store would be up front, the pumps would be in back. We do recognize that the applicant is making a vast improvement to this property, but we just didn't want to set a precedent of anti-urban commercial overlay development here, and that's why the recommendation is for disapproval.
Thank you. And you, could you speak briefly on the Near East Area Commission vote?
They recommended unanimous approval of this application.
Well, thank you, and thank you so much for your comments as well. I would now like to move for passage of 1575-2016. Are there any comments or questions for my colleagues?
Seeing none, I move for passage.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, President Klein.
We have ordinance 1591-2016 to grant a variance from the provisions of Sections 33, 33.02, AR-12, ARLD, and AR1, Apartment Residential District Use, 3312.27 Parking Setback Line, 3312.49 Minimum Numbers of Parking Spaces Required, 3321.01 Dumpster Area, 3321.05 Vision Clearance, 3333.09 Area Requirements, 3333.18E Building Lines, 3333.19A1 Building Lines on Corner Lots in 3333.23 Minimum Sideyard permitted of the Columbus City Codes for the property located at 1157 through 1159 Oak Street 43205, to permit an eating and drinking establishment or general office with reduced development standards in the ARLD Apartment Residential District, and to repeal ordinance number 1738-2010 passed December 13, 2010. The applicant is Nina Maseria, care of Amanda Dunfield. The proposed use is an eating and drinking establishment. The city department's recommendation is approval. The Near East Area Commission recommended approval. If there are no questions or comments, I would like to move for passage.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, President Klein.
And our final ordinance is 0728-2016 to rezone 986 Hilliard Rome Road East 43206, being 11.75 acres located at the southeast corner of Hilliard Rome Road East and Fisher Road, from our rural district to LM Limited Manufacturing District. The applicant is Preferred Real Estate Investments to LLC, care of Jill Tangam, an attorney. The proposed use is a commercial or industrial development. The city department's recommendation is approval, and there is no area commission for this geographic boundary. I would first like to move to take it from the table.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, President Klein.
And I would now like to move to table it again to July 11, 2016.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, President Klein.
Thank you, President Klein. That's all we have in zoning this evening.
Thank you, Chair Page. Any other business to come before council? Seeing none, can I get a motion to adjourn? Has that been seconded? Clerk call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, President Klein.
We stand adjourned until July 11, 2016 due to the July 4 weekend. Have a great Fourth.